All right, so here we are for the Pierce Township Board of Trustees regularly scheduled meeting. Debbie, you want to do roll call?
Sure. Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Kimballis?
Here. And stamping a pledge, Debbie, you want to leave us?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their honor for which it stands one nation under this law of justice and justice.
All right, we'll hop into approval of minutes.
I request a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June the 8th. And it's two special meeting minutes of June the 13th and the 15th.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Well, public presentations, I guess we need a motion to appoint Township Administrator Timothy Williams.
I make the motion to welcome and appoint our new administrator, Mr. Tim Williams, who's here with us tonight.
She's over here going, second. I second.
A little precursor, Tim. Any public discussion or comment? So we've discussed candidates and, you know, there's been a process leading up to this, obviously. Debbie, roll call.
Mr. Kimballis?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly?
Yes. All right.
He's right behind you.
So, Tim, welcome to the team, come on up. And we have a, we have a name tag for you, ready to go, Loretta just hasn't turned it around yet. So you can, you want to come up and say a couple of things and then have a seat? Yeah, yeah, and you got, you have a microphone over there, so settle in and get comfortable.
Well, I'd like to thank the Board of Trustees for your all those initial confidence and hopefully that will continue forward in the next few years, but certainly excited to come here, as I was telling some colleagues the other day, as I resigned as a special advisor in protecting for managers, I've gone full circle now, I've worked in county government, I've worked in state government, city government, and even ran a utility district at one time earlier in my career, so the only thing I've not done is township. So I'm really excited about that, it's a great learning experience for me, and I know last Thursday in coming in, it was with Loretta being a couple of our department heads, I'm really excited, you've got a really classy group here of people to work with, so that's going to be exciting for me, so again, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tim, excited about it.
We're very happy to have you.
You may take the classy comment back, but we'll give you some time.
Well, the staff's classy, we're not.
Yeah, of course.
There's a distinction.
Okay, police departmental celebrations and updates.
The police department partnered with the fire department in conducting joint active shooter training. Went very well, it's, we last had the training a couple of years ago, so it was important to do refresher training. And we worked very well in coordinating, coordinating our efforts with the fire department on it. We have partnered with ProScan Imaging to provide cardiac screening for all township employees at a nominal cost for the next three months. We are in preparation for our national night out evening on August 3rd from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at Lucas Corner Park. And we are also preparing for the Pierce Township Ice Cream Social on August 9th from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Spencer Shank Memorial Park. Special thanks to Dr. Kimballis's medical practice for being a sponsor of the event.
Chief Wright?
Good evening. For our updates, I'd like to thank Bethel Tate Fire Department, New Richmond Fire EMS, and Franklin Township. So as you know, last month you approved the new motor for one of the fire trucks. So we own three fire engines, with one of them being down, and we have two in service because of the two stations. So with the other engine needing to go out to have some warranty work done, we were short an engine, so those three communities, through a couple of different attempts, you know, the engine went to Peterbilt to be evaluated, had to be sent back to, like, order parts, so those three communities helped us out tremendously in lending us a fire engine to use. Subsequently, last week, I think, week before Franklin Township had an ambulance go down, so we were able to return that favor to them and let them borrow an ambulance, so just goes to demonstrate the great relationship we all have around this county. We did have one fireworks-related injury on 4th of July, so with the new law changes or rule changes, it was, you know, one's one too many, but glad it wasn't more than that. We did just get Chevy pricing back, the state bid contract, and we talked a few times about ordering a staff car, and we've been waiting on that state bid process, so they've now awarded that contract, and hopefully at the next meeting we'll have a concrete quote to move forward with. The other thing I'd like to bring up, since it's fresh, is we all know that the Goshen had devastating tornado last week, there was also one confirmed in Newtonsville as well as Miami Township. Still a tremendous amount of work going on up there for those folks. I think we've all sent resources up to help them out, and it kind of goes back to that returning the favor, they all come to our aid when we have a floods, several of them came to help us in our tornado, so we're just returning that favor. If anybody wants to know how they can get involved, how they can help out, Goshen Township's posting a lot of stuff on their social media as well as Claremont County, it has some vetted places to make donations and ways to get involved.
I did want to mention that, do we have anything on our website?
Yeah, I know on social media we've shared some of that correspondence, but I can double check with Laura and make sure we-
Sharing it periodically would probably be right. When you just bury it in some tertiary, you know, website queue, then it's probably not going to be a whole lot, but maybe just share it again and make sure it's out there. Would be my, my thought.
Take care of it, sir. Thank you.
John?
Well, we completed the, all the curb work on, for all the roads that are going to be paved. We ended up doing 1,585 millimeter foot of curb, which is kind of unheard of for a township to do, but we completed it, which is great news. But with that, if we would have, if we would have subbed that out, it would have been about $60 millimeter foot. And the concrete costs that we have in it were roughly about $15,000. If we would have subbed it out, it would have cost us roughly about $95,000. So it, big savings for us, the one of ourselves, which is, which is great. My guys worked hard on it, so feather in their cap. The other thing is-
Good job, good on you guys, just to be sure, is that just material cost, though?
Yes, that is just material cost. Our, our labor cost is already in there, but I would say it-
It's got to be less.
It's way less.
Yeah.
It's still, I mean, you're probably talking, you know, at least $40,000 in savings. So, but we, this week and probably a portion of next week, our guys will be up in Goshen helping with the debris cleanup. They've taken a few dump trucks and the mini excavators, and the people are just getting the debris out, or the, all the tree debris out to the road. And then there's a lot of townships that are going up and down through there, just picking it up and hauling it to a central dump site in, in Goshen, so it, it's, there's pictures up there, it's, the amount of, the amount of different communities that have showed up to help is, is amazing. That tornado was way more devastating than the one that we saw here, so I, I can't imagine having to try to facilitate that, so and try to do that on your, on your own.
Thanks, John.
All right, well, the Pond Run Road, we, which Pete can talk about it, we have, Tom has emailed with their lawyer, other than that, there's not really a whole lot of correspondence that has happened yet on that aspect.
So that, kind of a little on that, too. Mr. Kohler, our attorney, and I had a call, conference call a couple of weeks ago about this, so the circumstances are such that, you know, the roadway appears to be slowly collapsing into the creek bed. And the area that requires repairs outside of the formal right-of-way. And the ownership of that property is CLP Commercial Liability Partners, I think is the formal name. However, the NOPE organization has some agreement with CLP whereby any kind of activity that we were to perform, repairs or otherwise, that would be in, outside of our roadway easement, would require the permission of not only, obviously, the ownership of the property, but also the consent of NOPE. And what we're proposing is, and John, please fill in the details more than what I know, but the insertion of culvert pipe to, and over which we would, I guess, place soil and trees and shrubbery and the like, something that would be compatible with the scenery and the, the area, and in order to ultimately stabilize that hillside. So, but as John suggested, you know, Mr., our attorneys last night, Mr. Keating, did send an email to the CLP attorney, or the firm, I should say, and we're waiting to hear back on, you know, what they're willing to do, you know, what our next steps could be, but apparently it will require, you know, the approval, or maybe formal or informal, of NOPE, however, my opinion was that, you know, in stabilizing that roadway, we, you know, are obligated to take some form of action, not only to stabilize the roadway itself, but also to allow for that roadway to remain patent for the purposes of emergency equipment and the like, not only the convenience of the area residents, but fire trucks and so forth, police, you know, vehicles have to be able to safely get through to service that area, so that's where we are, that's all we've got. John, was there anything?
Did you guys talk to NOPE?
So, in conversing, in having a conversation with our attorney, he recommended that we go the route of contacting the attorney first to get their formal input before we actually contact NOPE.
Tried talking to them.
What was the response?
We are currently in a lawsuit with CLP and we don't feel comfortable allowing anything.
About what?
The same as what, what I gave last month.
And so the lawsuit now, you know, relates to another area that really relates to Pond Run specifically, it relates to, I think, a row of trees that were taken down along, on top of, or along a berm along 52.
Right.
So, but that, I think that's the lawsuit that they're, that's in question, is that, is that your understanding as well?
He, he wouldn't speculate on the lawsuit.
Well, so, I, well, it struck me as being unreasonable, I mean-
Who, who did we talk to from NOPE?
Lives off a faggot drone, what was his name?
Was it Wayne?
Wayne.
One of us can reach out to Wayne, I think.
And just explain to him, look, the damn thing's going to fall into the, into the creek. You know, we have to take action, which-
I explained it to him, you know, I said, you know, we could have a year, I, I don't know exactly how long we have, but it's been slipping for a while, and it's now to the point where it's, it's getting bigger, but it, you know, it's still passable, so.
Yeah, well, you know, I'll, I'll give Wayne a call and see where we go.
I think part of that problem, it's kind of hard to know who's actually leading the organization, I don't, I don't know how structured they are, or unstructured, but you know, who the, who the decision makers are, so to speak.
Well, I'll, I'll talk to Wayne, see what he says. But that's, I mean, it's kind of ridiculous that they've got a lawsuit, that's not, that's not our issue. You know, in fixing a road is, is, I don't see how that would come into conflict in any way with their lawsuit, they can still have their lawsuit, we're not, we're not a party to it, so to me, I, I just think, let, let us pass, let us fix this, and let, and let's move forward, we're not, you know. How many trees are you taking down?
Um, they're not very large trees, but there's, I mean, there's quite a few, they're kind of what I would consider scrub trees.
Half of them are dead.
All right, anything else, John? All right, planning and zoning. We'll come back, I'll come back. Planning and zoning.
He has a method to his madness.
All right, what do we got over there, gentlemen?
All righty, so, last month was actually the busiest month we've had from a permit perspective for the entire year, so we had 41 total permits, 18 of which were houses, 14 code cases, and 11 of which were closed as well, so, or closed and resolved. We continued pushing on the land use plan as well, so last month was the fifth meeting that we had. We're just finishing up the existing conditions, so that'll be, that, we anticipate having that done within the next 30 to 45, 45 days. The, the existing conditions portion of it, then we'll move into the public, formal public input and then the implementation, so we're still on schedule, we mentioned, it's probably, probably be about a year from last, last December, so-
We're, we're, we'll be getting close in the fall.
Yep. And falls are really, falls tends to be a pretty good time for public meetings and things, summer is not always great, just because people are on vacation frequently and all that sort of stuff, so we tried to time it that way. But the other portion of the land use plan is, we, we've been in contact with OKI, and they have a fiscal analysis tool that they use where they can determine roughly the fiscal impacts from a, from a revenue and cost perspective of public improvements based off of different development scenarios. So they sent us an MOU, there's no cost of the service, and they're willing to just work, to work with us. It's just one more data point that should really help us make good decisions as far as the real hair-splitting sort of decisions and concept of the land use plan, so we'll be implementing that as well and signing an MOU with them, so I just wanted to make you aware, whenever we sign MOUs, you know, you guys should be advised, but there's no cost or anything, so.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, let's jump into East Legendary update real quick.
Oh, yeah. So as you know, declared a nuisance, and the last motion that you made was that we proceed with securing the site, so we worked with Eads Fence to install a security panel fence along, around the site, that'll be there until at least December. We'll determine that shortly before that period of time if that needs to continue, or if the owner has taken control on their own volition. The next step we're working on right now is with an engineer named Chris Schwartz, who has sent us back a quote for a Phase 1 engineering report to assess the site. And that way, we'll have a tool to move forward on our own to determine what steps 2, 3, 4, and 5, and so on and so forth are going to be, and we're not just going to be taking the owner's word for it at that point in time. The last contact I had with the owner was that they're aware of the fence that we put up, and that they were going to be paying the cost of the fence by tomorrow. And then on Monday, they anticipated having their plans in for, for the rebuild for the structure, so those are very loose deadlines, if we don't receive the, the payment tomorrow, we will work to put, place a lien on the property, which is basically like an assessment on the site, and we'll proceed with the engineer regardless.
Okay. And it sounds like all we can do at this point.
And the cost for the engineer will be handled the same way, so we won't be directly incurring that cost over the long, long haul.
All right, thanks, Eddie.
Problem.
We'll go to administrative updates, I like to be linear. We'll get today. We'll get today.
It's parts. You went down and you backed up.
Yeah.
Loretta. Um, I will give them one more time.
This is the last one.
This is the last one.
Do you want to do like a lap around the room?
Right, absolutely. I'll wait. Queensway. Um, everyone hopefully has noticed that the LED lighting conversion for State Route one twenty-five has been completed on both sides of the road. Uh Duke had indicated that they may have had supply issues on our side of the road, but fortunately they were able to get those all installed and they're all completed. Um, tomorrow evening, the viewing for the items in the former administration building in the former village is going to be held from six to eight PM. That's being handled entirely by the auctioneer. He will have staff on site that can help give people instructions in terms of how to bid on those items. The bid must remain open for at least ten days. I believe that it'll be, he said that he'll probably keep it open from Thursday for for um two weeks till um Thursday following two weeks. Um, so I was able to go in there today to take a look. There were items that were brought to the administration building from other locations, lo- other locations, like the Morse Hou- house had probably thirty or so bicycles in it. So all of those are are um tagged and itemized. He has about five hundred lots of items for sale. Every piece of furniture, every historic item, there's at least uh um one or two signs from the former village. Anything that was not otherwise needed for public purposes among the two townships is now available to um be bid on by people that are interested. Again, it's entirely an online auction and it will be accessible on the web's link. We're supposed to get all those items posted today. Um, so hopefully by this evening, you'd be able to take a look and and see those items. And that's on Craig Lidle's auction site. Those are uh the main items. If you would like, I can go on and uh just speak to the traffic study on Green Road.
Uh, we'll we'll put that off, I think. Uh, didn't we expect Randy to be here? I'm wondering if there wasn't some, the other Randy Nice.
There wasn't some.
Maybe he's not thinking it's until six thirty.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So let's keep going and we'll we'll see what happens and come back to it. So anything else, Loretta?
Yeah.
So just to be clear, on on the auction, there will be public particip- public walkthrough ability. This will also be on.
Administration building.
And this will also be online as well, so.
Yes, the legal notice is out and it should be on our website. It is on our website. It's on our main page. It's across the banner.
Yeah, that sounds good.
And so is the the also, um, Eddie didn't mention the sale of land is also being advertised right now.
Um, so so uh is anyone else here from Green Road for the Green Road thing? Yeah, just making sure.
Eddie, did you want to say something about the sale of the land? You had that look like you wanted to say something.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, that's.
Travel.
Yeah, so we started advertising it last month, or sorry, last week, and it'll run until the twenty-eighth.
Did, yeah, I noticed that Batavia put uh they posted up on their Facebook page. Did we post it up on ours? I'm sorry, I I shouldn't look. I didn't.
Yep, it's it's pinned on, so it'll stay at the top of our Facebook page for the duration.
All right. You know, just jump into the motion.
Michelle.
Okay.
Parks and Green Space.
Totally confused right on the the sequence of things. Uh, we had our meeting on July the sixth. Uh, we had a couple guests there. Dennis Lukin um is very interested in pickleballing over at the tennis courts. So he's wanting to put um his ideas and um comments on, since we're going to redo that area anyway, on how we could possibly add pickleball courts over there as part of the tennis court area. Um, we talked about the Grove Park project. It's being pushed uh for completion for spring of twenty twenty-three. We're waiting on the um bid packages to come back. Is that correct? Thank you. Um, events as was discussed, uh concert at the park. We had a guest, Leroy Ellington, who came and um told us what his company does and how we could utilize and get um get the summer series started with his with his company. And I have that information in case you guys want to look at all of that. Um, we had talked, Debbie, we had talked about the budget for next, did we put ten thousand in there?
We did.
Okay, I just wanted to double check that. Movies in the park, we kind of touched base on and we're kind of, I think, going to shelf that for the time being because the cost with the licensing for the movies. Um, I was going to get some more information, make some phone calls around to see how other areas get around that loophole. Or maybe they pay it, I don't know. The Ice Cream Social is um on our radar. Thank you again, Pete, for sponsoring. And that again will be on um August the ninth from sixty-eight. We saw the artwork for the George Carpenter Memorial um signs, which um came back. They're beautiful if you haven't seen them. And John will provide installation timing when he's available. There's, yes, some time. We need to schedule with him. The five oh one C three, we have tabled indefinitely because we're not sure that's the avenue we need to go down right now. And National Night, Nice National Night Out and our Parks Meeting are on the same night. So we've moved our time up to six o'clock, trying to keep the meeting very light so we can go and enjoy National Night Out with the residents as well. Um, that's about it. Our next meeting is August third.
All right. Michelle, um, and or Loretta, um, well, first of all, the plaques were very nice. I I did see them when they were out in the hallway or last week or very, very nice. And those were privately funded, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and then uh with respect to the Ice Cream Social, if we talked a little bit about maybe having, if it's possible, the plans for Grow Park on display at Spencer Shank in the form of easel boards or something to that effect, will that be possible?
I did get an email back today from the engineers. They said they'll prepare because I thought some some pamphlets or packets as well that people can take with them would be a good idea. So I'm hoping for both. I think they're gonna print some sheets, but we'll be responsible for getting them on foam core board or display board. We'll have to see what the weather's like and see how successful we are with with putting outdoor displays. But they're gonna give us sheets that we can do that with too.
Oh, great, great. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Michelle. New business. Debbie.
I request a motion to approve the tax budget for the year twenty twenty-three.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of the payroll for the month of June in the amount of three hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-one cents.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion for approval of the payment of the bills for the month of June in the amount of four hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight fifty-four, eleven.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-two rescinding Resolution twenty twenty-two oh twenty-three, and that's with the local government.
So definition on this, because, you know, Nick, you just looked at me and just, I could tell you were wanting wanting more information on this.
Absolutely.
Um, so last month, we passed a resolution supporting a formula for the distribution of state and local government funds. Um, in the interim, several other townships did not like that formula. And so therefore, a new formula was was uh a new compromise formula was created. So we have to rescind the motion that we made at last month's meeting. The next motion will be for the revised formula.
Okay. Well, I I I'm in agreement with it. I've looked at it.
There you go.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion for Resolution twenty twenty-two dash oh twenty-six, authorizing adoption of an alternative method of apportionment of the undivided local government fund for calendar year twenty twenty-three and excluding the approval otherwise required of the legislative authority of the city located wholly or partially in the county with the greatest population.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
And that's all I thought.
Thanks, Debbie. Chief Brocksmith.
I request a motion to purchase a computer from Micro Center in the amount of three thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. The computer would be used to investigate cybercrime cases. Uh, the size of the files that are used to forensically produce electronic crime cases are too large and resource intensive to use business or consumer-grade computer equipment. The specifications of the proposed computer purchase come from the Ohio State Highway Patrol Cyber Crimes Unit and the Ohio Bureau of Investigation Cyber Crimes Unit.
Okay.
Some of.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to pay the invoice from the Claremont County Office of Management and Budget in the amount of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. Uh, this in invoices for the Claremont County Communication Centers Dispatch Services for the Pierce Township Police Department for the year twenty twenty-one.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
He threw us over a loop with that one. Second, um, third.
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
And Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Chief Brocksmith.
And I request a motion to participate in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three Lead Claremont County Leadership Program. The program has an orientation day in August and classroom days are the first Thursday of each month from October twenty twenty-two to May twenty twenty-three. The cost of the program is two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
All right, so you ready to go back to school?
I am.
But are you start growing your hair out?
With the uh.
Where?
With the encouragement of Bob Powell.
Okay.
Now, the question is, should we get him one of those little My Little Pony backpacks to send him off to school?
I think we should uh pass a contingent upon that.
Yeah, I think we should.
I could tell you, I'm not gonna get at Camp Joy on top of that telephone pole.
I can see it now. It's team building.
I told Bobby we were afraid of heights.
Yeah.
All right, chief, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Chief Wright.
I request a motion to approve the appointment of Matthew Stoltz as a part-time firefighter, EMT basic, the established rate pending successful completion of all associated pre-employment requirements in a one-year probationary period, noting the cost of all associated pre-employment requirements is out of the township.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you. I request a motion to approve the appointment of Garrett Cole Mauser as a part-time firefighter, EMT, the established rate pending successful completion of all associated pre-employment requirements and a one-year probationary period, noting the cost of all associated pre-employment requirements is out of the township.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you. I request a motion to accept the resignation of Lance Fujizani in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
I request a motion to terminate Tim Lenz for failing to meet the pre-employment qualifications.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you. I request a motion to accept Craig Belcher's resignation from full-time employment with reassignment as a part-time firefighter paramedic.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Thank you, and I request a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one nine-one-one detail for for two thousand twenty-three invoiced in the amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred and seventeen dollars and thirty cents.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Sir, Director Kohler.
John, I request a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one nine-one-one detail for the twenty twenty-three invoice in the amount of twenty-three dollars and forty-six cents.
Now, hold on. Hold on. This is a big one here.
I don't know. I think we need some debate on this one.
Definitely.
We don't talk to each other much.
Or they don't talk to you much. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Freeman.
Sorry.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Sir, Director Kohler.
I request a motion to approve the quote from Clean Incorporated for the replacement signs for streets in Amelia in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred and two.
What streets?
And ninety cents. Basically, all the streets that we haven't done yet that we took over from the Village of Amelia that aren't compliant.
The street, the name signs, is that what you meant?
Name signs, uh, no parking signs, the stop signs, the speed limit sign. Okay, there's the biggest majority of them are washed out and you can't even read them.
Gotcha.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr.
Yes.
John.
I request a motion to approve the quote from Best One Tire Mid-America Incorporated for tracks for the skid steer in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars. The rubber tracks that are on it, they're wore out, gone.
So moved.
Second. So basically, you're tearing up everything you've been trying to fix, right?
Yeah, or well, they're basically putting a new set of tires on it.
Yep.
All right, motion and a second.
Mr. Kimballis.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Uh, zoning administrator, Eddie. So uh I have good news on number eighteen. We won't need a resolution for that. We went out today and Pond Run had, or I'm sorry, uh, one pond lane had already had been mowed, like, within the hour. So no nuisance there anymore. It's been resolved. But uh the second item that we have is uh Planning and Zoning Administrator Eddie McCarthy requests a motion for nuisance resolution twenty twenty-two oh two eight regarding excessive vegetation at thirty-seven seventy-five Vineyard Woods in accordance with O R C five oh five dot eight seven, uh, which pertains to uh excessively tall grass. So both in both the front yard and the backyard, it appears that the property has not been mowed since at least last fall. So we've been mon- we've been monitoring it and sent a number of letters to and contact efforts to the owner of record, but have not received a response.
It looks like that owner of record is in on the West Coast. Is that kind of what you?
Yeah, so the the owner, it it looks like the the owner until very recently, they sold the property. We confirmed this with the auditor. They sold the property to a trust for a dollar. So I'm assuming that it's probably not a completely different entity in that way. I mean, I would I would be surprised if someone sold the property to a.
You don't think it was fair market value?
The what is it, sorry?
Not fair market value.
Right, exactly.
All right.
Is that vacant?
I'm sure the neighbors would appreciate the grass getting mowed, I would think. Have you gotten complaints on it?
Well, um, I went, I I received one complaint. We went out. I've actually met like five of the neighbors who are all very reasonable and then kind of understand the situation, but they've been pretty patient with it, but they understand the process. They figured that it would come to the point where we just have to remedy it ourselves.
They want the grass to be cut.
Oh, yeah. The the I I do have just one modification. I might be getting a little bit ahead of myself, but um I would just strike section seven of the resolution proposed and just re reword it to be the Board of Trustees authorizes staff to contract with a landscaping entity in the event that the owner fails to remedy the nuisance on site. I was a little little specific because we obtained, it was very hard to obtain quotes. I was a little, little specific because we obtained, it was very hard to obtain quotes. We received one quote for $650 and the other for $100. But before we onboard the $100 quote, I just want to make sure that it's clean.
Okay, so, but, but this has to be twofold. We have to, we have to do the nuisance, right?
So, yeah, so.
We have to make a motion for the nuisance, then we have to make a subsequent motion to authorize staff, right?
I built it in to the resolution. So as the, the language that I just gave, you'd be, the, the resolution being passed would also authorize staff.
Got the language.
Okay, I got you. Exactly.
That is amended.
So, so do I have a, a motion to pass, uh, resul- the nuisance resolution, uh, 2022 dash zero two eight as amended by uh, zoning administrator Eddie McCarthy?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes. So, um, other business, we do have an executive session we're gonna hop into, but do we have any public comment here from anyone? Bill.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. My name is Bill. We've run through several reports, and then the last trust meeting evening I mentioned it. I think we've got all the important received from the Fire Department staff. I think it looked pretty good, but we wanted to pull off in case there were additional inputs, additional comments. And then there is not. Everybody was satisfied with that draft. So at this point, I guess I'm here to say that your report is final, official. I'd like to hand Debbie my third one in place tonight, too. But my work is not done. By paying this final invoice, I would regret that Chief Wright will be on retainer for the rest of the year. But he has to take key ideas, key ingredients from that report, work in action. So with that, I want to thank Ms. Rudy. Welcome, Ms. Williams, to find me that I've, uh, investigated numerous fire departments around the country, cities, towns, villages, townships, counties, and your fire and insurance protection ranks extremely well. It's nice to know that my aides have a medical position in Pierce Township. So thank you for the opportunity to serve, and I, I will be in your service for the remainder of years, well, as they've, like, Chief Wright and his workers. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. I look forward to the report, and I'm sure there'll, there'll be, you know, more to come with that, with this, with the, with the outcome. Anybody else? Public comment?
Thank you, sir.
Fellow trustees, anything?
Nothing.
All right, so we do have a motion to enter executive session, uh, to be sure there could be action taken out of the backend of the executive session. Um, so anybody who'd like to stick around, please feel free. Motion to enter executive session is authorized by Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22 G1 to consider the appointment, employment, compensation of a public official regarding the position of township administrator. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Debbie?
Um, Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
And Mr. Kelly.
Yes. We'll be back.
We'll be back.
Eddie, are we ready? All right, do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moves.
Second.
Go call.
Mr. Campbellis?
Yes.
Mr.?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
And we have to make a motion to consider the contract for Tim, our new administrator. Right? So how should we, how should that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract of Mr. Tim. Williams. Sorry, I forgot your last name. This is not an auspicious beginning, sir.
I second the motion.
Okay. Go call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard, Tim. And so our, we did skip over the green road business. Our meeting started early, but we will bounce back to that. We had a traffic study done, or we had a bid to do a traffic study on Green Road. Can I get some more information about that bit?
Yes, I had reached out to our engineers with Clangers Group and asked for a proposal based upon the scope of work. I also included some of the correspondence from Mr. Nice originally. And their proposal is for data collection of traffic turning movement data on vineyard hills and vineyard woods, roads, and a summary of findings that they would write, but that's only one day of traffic study data for $1,950 and an additional $300 per day up to two additional days. And that would bring the threshold above the $2,500 that would require your approval. So I've not taken any action on accepting this work at this stage due to the scope of work to be clarified and the cost.
Okay. Well, so that, so how much for the, for one day?
Well, it was, it was 1,900 base in then, but that was only to get to.
That was one day of.
Yeah, accumulate one day of data and provide some findings. But I think we probably need to look at more than just one day of data. We've got to look at, you know, several, at least several data points to make, to make sense of it. But the point is that 1,900 base is way too high. I mean, sorry to say that, but I, I'd like to have an opportunity to sit down and talk to Clangers and have a better understanding of what they were thinking because this is a, this is a simple data collection process that shouldn't cost that much money. So.
We just got, currently, we just got one bid, correct?
Just one bid, right. We can go outside of that if we want to do that, but there, there's. Yeah, come on up.
The crosswalk study a couple of years ago, that was out there for several days. And so I don't know who, I'm just, I don't know who did that. I'm just.
I don't know.
Because we could, yeah, we could explore options of another bid or like you said, go back to finders and see.
Or we could do both.
Exactly. Or I'm just trying to save you some time too, because whoever did that just to see what their fee was, but it was back, I don't know, that, you know, it was about two years ago.
Might have been the county engineers at the park or where you.
No, no, it, there's, they put a cross, because people weren't, they weren't allowing pedestrians to walk away between green road and the next road down. And so they did a traffic study because next thing you know, right in front of the house on the corner, they put up like a pedestrian right of way sign. But there was a study done, the little metal things are still on the road and it was out there for four or five days. I'm just saying, you know, somebody did it. I maybe it wasn't Pierce Township, but somebody did a study on our road with our road and the adjoining road versus the road that exit for that crosswalk.
We can, we can check in.
Okay.
We can check and see if, if the county engineer did. And if there's data based on that, I was also thinking you had the sled out there for a couple of days too. So if there's some data that can be pulled out of there that Clangers could use to save some money. That, that's kind of why I want to sit down and talk to Clangers because there may be some just, you know, native data that we can, you know, use to soften that cost.
Fair enough. Okay.
But I just think that $1,900 for the base study is way too high. $300 a day seems way too high for putting, you know, the garden hoses across the street to do measurements. So I just want to sit down and see what's inside their head so that we can get a better price on that. If that's okay with you guys.
We'd like to see the data too, but that is a little pricey, quite frankly. It's taxpayer, it's all your money, right? It's everybody's money.
Yeah. And I just want you to know that there's been a red truck that's been driving up and down your street, kind of watching and trying to see the traffic. It's not some crazy person. It's, it's me. Wait, wait. I think I've seen, I think I've seen a couple of you walking on the street, so. Yeah. It, it, it looks to me like it could be a good opportunity to think about doing a share-o so that you've got a segregated space for people who are walking. And we'll talk about it later, but you know, something that we can do that can allow there to be separation between the walkers and the drivers.
But until we get the data.
Can't do much.
I mean, of course, we appreciate all you guys' input.
Right.
And I'm not, you know, willing to stop now, but I think we just need to get the difference, you know?
But yeah, I've been driving up and down the street and parking. So if you guys, you know, if you call the cops, they'll come, they'll, they've got me on record, you know?
You might not want to skew the data. You have to.
True that, yes. I'll have to stop doing.
Yes, sir.
Well, usually, usually, usually what you want to do is you want to get different, different times of day. And so, so when you're looking at just doing one data point, so you're looking at, at, you know, maybe a rush hour, but you'd also want to know what it's, what A and peak looks like and what PM peak looks like and what middle. But you'd also want to know what it's, what A and peak looks like and what P M peak looks like and what middle of the day looks like. So right there, you're talking about almost a thousand dollars worth of data, and that's, to me, that's way too high.
And.
Exactly, right. But, but one day during the week is about all I would need.
So, so the other, the other thing, just to give you guys a heads up, and I may be, and for collecting data off another road. So, you know, we've all been out campaigning, and how many times have you heard, you know, this is a cut through and people are flying up and down my road? And so I also would like some sort of control to establish a, a point in which we can say, this is a, this is an outlying data point. Or this is more egregious than some of the other roads that we have.
Right.
And therefore, we're justifying, because they're all, you know, we are allocating funds and, and, you know, for lack of a better term, robbing Peter to pay Paul. We're just taking something from one space and moving it to another, and I want to make sure we do our due diligence that it's appropriate based on the funds that we have.
Well, and I think you have to be careful too, because no offense to you guys, because you live it, you're on it. But we do get a lot of complaints. I mean, you know, there's, there was a discussion about, about Bennett Road near you. Where people are upset because cars keep going through the stop sign. There's no technology that I can think of that will stop people from going through a stop sign. They just, they, they will do what they, what do they call it? California's gliding stop. I mean, do you know of any other than stop sticks? So, you know, I don't know, some, to some degree, I don't know exactly where we're headed, because there may not be an answer at all. So I just want to, I want to put that out there, because I need to manage expectations. There may not be an answer, but we'll, we'll look for it.
And to your question about how many days, I, my thought was three days would be good, a Monday, a Friday, or a Friday, a day in between, and a weekend day. That was my thinking. Mondays and Fridays are probably pretty busy. Middle, midweek would probably be a different animal than obviously weekends. So I was thinking three days. I'm sorry, sir.
No, 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 no. Please, sir. Hi, my name is Tom Figuez. I live on Vineyard Hills, very first house on the left coming in. When we had some talks with residents and they were really upset about the number of cars, I'm not sure we're ever going to be able to keep the number of cars coming through. However, there's a certain way we can slow them down. And I know, I grew up in Hyde Park, and, okay, so to make a long story short, there are a number of streets in Hyde Park. And in Oakley and in Mount Washington, or not Mount, Mount Lookout, that have speed bumps. So I went to the two firehouses in Hyde Park and Oakley, asked the firemen there if they, if that is a detriment to them. And they absolutely said, yes, which I understood, a little disappointing, but they said, but there is a new set of strips. It's not going to necessarily call them speed bumps where they are not perpendicular, they are horizontal. Where they, and I'm not real positive what I'm talking about, but both of them came up and said this, that the trucks, fire trucks, garbage trucks can still get through very easily without any type of, you know, stoppage. You know, and it's something I think we might want to look at. I haven't seen them yet, but they're both very, both houses are vehement, saying, boy, I wish we had them in the, in this area. And I'm not sure if you're familiar with them, but they said they definitely work.
There's a, it's, it's a diagonal series of rumble strips. That you'll have like three or four or five of them, kind of parallel to one another, but diagonal in the road. And so when the car hits that, it makes a really loud sound. That's the other concern you may want to think about, because you could be trading the, the number of cars or the speed for a lot of noise. So I just, you know.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how they're, they're set, but they were, they were very, they were very vehement and positive about the fact that these, they work.
Yeah, but I just want you to be aware that there's a give and take. So if, yeah. So I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say.
These are the same things, but I mean, like I said, they were, they were very positive.
Yeah.
The trade off too is where, like Alan's alluding, we have to do our due diligence as well. You know, you have snake huts back in the day, right? You got all, rid all of snakes, and you got a massive mouse problem. So you don't want to trade one bad thing for another, and then I have residents that are unhappy because it's really loud and they have to draw. I'm just, I'm not advocating any, any particular way. I'm just throwing that out there to make sure that we, and I, certainly, I appreciate your input. And we're hopefully look into all this, but just kind of caveating that a little bit as we move forward. All right, anything else?
I think Chief's got some.
Well, what the city of Cincinnati is experimenting with right now are what's called speed cushions. And I talked to John and Craig about this, and speed cushions are a speed hump, but it's modified. So a larger wheelbase, such as a fire truck, would not hit the speed bump. But the average sized car would have to go over this speed hump. Yeah.
Is it, is it, is it wide, as wide as a snowplow?
The snowplow would still be affected by, no matter, you know, if it's a regular sized speed hump or a speed cushion. So that's problematic there, but as far as the emergency vehicles, the fire trucks, they would not be affected by the speed cushions.
Okay.
Alan's mentioning, there's one in Newtown that I forgot to get a picture of, the Newtown Road down there towards 32 by Ivy Hills. What Alan's talking about, we witnessed, I forgot to send pictures, that is what you're talking about. He had seen that we took a picture, we had what, that gentleman's talking about is one that, yeah, police chief, where the vehicles are wide enough, so it, you know, if they're on the regular pavement, these things are independent. That's so those trucks, maybe not the snowplows, but everybody else is on regular pavement. It's just regular passenger cars would not, they couldn't even straddle it, because the width is different than a passenger, even a passenger car tried to straddle, they hit one or the other. They couldn't straddle like the regular sized vehicle could. So that's, that's, sorry to clarify that, yeah.
Okay. All right, so we do have to look further. Obviously, we're going to get another, a price and talk to Clangers. Do we have any more comment or input? Yes, ma'am.
So I just wanted to let you all know some of the seriousness of the traffic on our road and some of the people we've encountered. Me personally and my husband, people personally trying to hit us on purpose. We asked him to slow down. Even the postman tried to hit me twice and within four days, and we have a witness to it. Someone almost hit him a couple, what was it, May 16th? And he asked him to slow down. The person got out of their car. He said they smelled of alcohol and marijuana. They told him he was going to kick his ass. Then they said if they had their gun, they'd put a bullet in his head. So this is what we're dealing with. It's not just the traffic, it's the threats, the death threats. And this is where I draw the line. I'm upset. This is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. And we've dealt with it for four years. And it makes me nervous. I've cried and cried. I mean, it's come to a point where people are out of control. We have someone who drinks and drives on our street every day. My husband picks up those cans every week, and it's during the day. And one of the neighbors even said something about it last week. It's the same beer cans. We have people, the other day, we're working on by the road, and I'm like, I smell skunk. And my husband's like, no, that's coming from that truck. They're smoking weed while they're driving. So we got all kinds of nonsense going on out there. It's dangerous. And that's why I want something done.
Well, the threats of violence, I think should be reported.
Well, I know, my husband won't let me call. We already called the police that same day, but the, no offense to you, but you come out for two minutes. What can be done? I confront these officers all the time. It's like, why aren't you giving tickets? Why are you only sitting on our street for two minutes and then say people aren't speeding? But when you see the cop, of course, you're going to slow down. And then I'm like, use our driveway, so you can use your radar. And then the excuse is, the radar won't work. All we get is, I can't, I can't, I can't. We have not heard one thing that anybody can do to help us. So I'm frustrated.
I understand. I can see that.
And I've had it. When people threaten my life, that's it. Something has to be done.
Well, I would certainly recommend that if somebody threatens your life, get ahold of Chief Rockstrom personally. And pick up the phone and call him. He'll take your call.
I know you will, but we've had two incidents in Anderson, one on Fourth of July. We call, you know, they say, you see something, say something. A lady almost hit it. She ran a red light, looked right at us, almost T-boned us, doing a 60 and a 40. She kept running more red lights. We call 911, nobody shows up. So we follow her to Aldi, I call again, and I'm getting lectured about, why are you following this person? Don't confront them. I'm not going to confront them. I'm waiting for the police. No one would come.
That was in Anderson?
That's in Anderson.
Okay.
So we're tired of calling and nobody helps.
Well, we, we don't, yeah.
We're not, we're not Anderson.
I know you're not.
And what's up with the post guy, like?
Yeah.
You got a murderous post guy on our hands, trying to run people and kill them on the street?
Slow down, and he got mad. He slammed on the gas and tried to hit me.
The post guy?
Yes.
And more than, on more than one occasion?
In four days, twice, and I have a witness.
Tried to hit you again on the second time? I mean, I think the USPS needs to be alerted to this. This guy, you know, this is definitely an odd postman.
Yes, well, I said if he did it one more time, I was calling the post office.
Yeah.
I'll give him three strikes and he's out, but.
Well, that sounds fairly, that sounds pretty criminal if he's hitting people.
Sorry if I sound upset, but I.
No, it's okay. It's okay that you sound upset, because you are upset. Chief, what's up with the, with, you can't do radar from the driveway? Is that, is that?
I, I don't know why that would be an excuse. It certainly doesn't sound like an excuse to me. So, you know, I, I'm going to give you my card with my cellphone number. And call me anytime if you have, you know, a police service that is not up to our standards, I will definitely look into it.
The other thing.
Drive, we've said this for years. I mean, well, the gates are not locked. We just hook them. If you want to open them, we don't care. Get these people.
Right.
Use our drive. We want you to use it.
And as I, I said in, in the past, you know, we, we can do speed enforcement, we could put up the speed trailer. But, so we have a number of speeding areas around the township that we address, and we kind of rotate those locations. So we can certainly address the speeding and, but it's a short term solution and not a long term solution.
Right, and that's been done a couple of times, but when people see that, they slow down.
Right.
You know, it's skewed data. That's the problem.
Sure, but even if it's skewed data, if it slows them down.
That's true. It can stay there permanently.
But it, yeah, unless you leave the sled there forever, it's not going to do much good.
All right.
You know, and I'm, I do apologize. I'm just upset. I'm just tired of it.
Well, thank you for your input. We'll keep working on it, okay?
The only way we can find a solution is if people bring it to our attention that we have a problem. So we appreciate the fact that you guys came in and we'll work together to try to find a solution to the problem.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
It's probably one of the reasons you moved out here like I did, because you'll have that close contact with your elected officials, your police division and so forth. So, thank you. I do have one comment about green road speeding. Single cars want, do a drag race. It's not two cars, but there's one. You can see peel out marks.
I saw that.
Rather lengthy. So if you're patrolling it, that shows you that they're taking that as a remote opportunity to gun it and so.
Yeah, it's, it's a long straightaway.
Yeah, it's a long straightaway and it's remote and.
Two in the morning, you're a teenage kid?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Well, we lost a kid on pond run to that very kind of activity. Where? On pond run, right from my house.
Okay.
About six years ago, we lost a kid to that kind of activity, too fast, missed the curve ultimately, went straight into the creek and died. And each side of that road is unforgiving.
Yeah.
So you're going in the ditch or.
Or you're going in somebody's front yard.
Yeah.
Somebody's, you know.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a dangerous area for that activity. It's narrow.
Yeah, agreed.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Amy Nusel from the same neighborhood, and two questions came up for people that couldn't make it this evening. One, we're wondering if a, a center line could be put down that road. And, and I guess I took matters in my own hands and said, no, it couldn't, because it seems like it's too narrow of a street. And then the second one was, can we put up signs in our neighborhood that say, no, no through traffic, but it's public road? So then again, I answered that question, but I just wanted to make sure that I answered correctly when I send a, a group email this evening to everybody.
So, so a few years ago, we put a no trucks sign on Bradbury Road. The county informed us that we were violating the law and told us in not so, in not so pleasant terms, get the sign down. So it, it, that would be kind of up to the county to, to bless that, not up to us.
Sure.
I mean, if we had control of all of the roads, we'd do things differently, but we can't. So that is, is, is not, is not a way to go. And what was the other, the center line?
Yeah.
The road should be a standard width. It is not. It's not, it's not 25? Yeah, that's, yeah, the center line. Yeah, right. And it's actually probably predates some of the new standards that there's a requirement that you have to be, what, 25 feet off center for, to be a state road. With, with excess right of way. And I think in the county, I think it has to be, what, 15 feet off center? So you get a 10 foot true lane. Well, no, because there's no way out. Debbie just asked if we could make it a one way road.
All this would probably be, you know, if we are able to come to a conclusion on possibly having a study down, a lot of this would be.
Yeah.
Because we have a lot of those types of roads in the township. I mean, we do, and you, as you go further, you still get more of that. I'm just thinking of like West Concord and different routes that are very similar.
Well, Bradbury, for a very long time, was only in 19, it was, it was, we were well under, we were at eight or nine feet in some of those sections for, for a lane. So, yeah, so we were well under on Bradbury, and it had a ton of traffic. I mean, three, four thousand cars a day, I think were the, that was the number on Bradbury at one point. So, yeah, so, but, but this could be viewed, to your point, as, as a bit of a template for others.
And I don't think it would be wrong for you all to include the county engineer on any correspondence you have, you know, on this topic. And obviously, in addition to this body, to make sure he's in the know and the loop, and the more people that know about the problem, the better, I think. Give you a little piece of good news, Eddie will probably expand on it, perhaps you can. You all missed the meeting early on. I think we announced that it began at 5:30, but nevertheless, there was a blighted property of concern, I think, maybe close to you.
Yeah, I have some information.
Okay.
I have some questions about that, actually.
Okay, so Eddie had, if Eddie, maybe you could say a few words about what you said early on, since these folks weren't here.
Use a different set of codes to mark progress, but our concern with that is also our security and the defense gathers. So how should the idea of this, how does this, is it hard to say?
It's really hard to say. Realistically, it's likely that a lot of the time.
It's really hard to decide. Realistically, it's, it's likely that a lot of the time.
Just like we think that's a little water just not.
If you have the opportunity and want to reach out to them, that could light a fire.
So you said you did reach out to them.
I did, yeah. Whenever we see complaints about who try to reach out, kind of close, parallel agency. It's just not a guarantee that they respond.
That I received from one of the next door neighbors. So I'll just read it because I sound, I'm a whole lot better if I just read what I, it makes a lot more sense. Uh, have spoken to the next door neighbors at seven, three, seven, seven, five Vineyard Woods Drive. They report several species of frogs, rats, skunk at this property. One neighbor reported that, quote, you wouldn't believe the animal sounds coming from that backyard at night. Another neighbor reported that the animal sounds are heard throughout the day as well. In addition, one of the families have discovered that the house is now listed under a trust of a person living in an apartment in Seattle. And neither of the men who we knew to be the owners of the name listed on the trust. Upon further digging, they can find no evidence that the person listed even exists. The grass has not been cut all year. Let's see. I wanted to submit some photos that I took yesterday. The general condition of the abandoned house, the backyard where a pool and hot tub are somewhere and all that mess. You can't even see where the pool and hot tub are. And then the gap between the Kelly's fence, which was in place long before the fence at three, seven, seven, five Vineyard Hills Drive was erected. We are worried that that poses a potential danger for children to be able to slide through the, through, to get to the backyard.
So, uh.
Just this past week, it wasn't like this, it last fall.
Yeah. So a nuisance, probably a particular nuisance, it's actually a number of these. So I, I've heard for all I've heard the animals that have seen the property, we started processing that. But we have to do our ability to reach out to that if they are responding. Everything I've stated about the person in Seattle, that, that, that person's correct. Uh, the metal just hung back on the wall and the thing probably sold for a dollar. So it, it doesn't seem like us.
There's unfortunately, I understand your frustration, but unfortunately there's a process that we have to go through. And it's a legal process and we're actually jumping that process as much as we can by filing the nuisance complaint, which is the first step. To getting anything accomplished. We do have a certain level of frustration. Every time we do this, when we have to deal with, um, the county. Um, so we don't always have an active and aggressive partner. Um, and these guys are looking at me like, shut up anyway, but i- it's a fact. It's what happens. So we, we push as hard as we can. There's another property that we've been dealing with over in Legendary Run. We now have a fence around the thing. Um, we've, uh, in, in the past, we've even taken buildings down, um, where it was necessary to do so. Um, and so. Well, actually, I mean, that one was a little bit easier. The, the tear down was a little bit easier because it was a situation where the, the gentleman had passed away. And the children lived in another state, but until it arrived in our, you know, front door. It probably took a couple of years because, you know, the neighbors just drove by it and didn't say anything until the roof fell in. And then we started noticing it and started doing some due diligence on it. In this case, um, I don't, you, you said four years, but when was it turned in to you for, for action? So we've been on this case for a couple of months. So at this point, you know, we're going to do what we can to try to push and, and, and get something done as quickly as possible. It does, it does trouble me that we do have a pool in the backyard. And it is accessible to children and, and, and pets and everything else. So. You know, right. We had a house, when I first got elected, uh, sorry, I'm going to tell war stories now. Um, when I first got elected, we had a house on, um, gosh, what was the name of that street? Hal Core. And, and it had been going on for ten years. And they had people that were living in the house that were, you know, just horrible people. There were rats. There was a. A trailer that had burned up in the backyard. Every weekend they'd have like street fights. And a, a, at a certain point, we just were like, that's it. We're done. And so that's when we started doing nuisance violations. So as a township, that's our strongest tool for us to, to have some leverage. Uh, to move forward. In this case, you also have an absentee owner, which is the same thing we have with Hal Core. And that we also have with the other property I mentioned. So these are the, the strongest tools that we have and we're going to continue to move forward. And we'll put it on our agenda to keep repeating, you know, talking about it as we go by.
From a legal perspective, we have to have grounds to stand on. I mean, I, I get as mad as you guys do. And I've been in this position for four years. I have no background in government or anything like that. And the red tape and the amount of time it takes to get stuff done. Has infuriated me over the last four years, but it is unfortunately, if we don't do our due diligence, we move too quickly. Or we don't have legal grounds to stand on, we put ourselves liable as well. So the pool, as Alan I think is kind of alluding to, could be. Cause the nuisance, we have to, we have to be able to say that this is a nuisance. It's, it's causing a hazard, you know. A cake could fall in the pool. It's a similar thing with the legendary run property we're dealing with right now. There's, there's a wall that's precarious. And if somebody gets in there, we're able to put fencing up around it. We're going to continue to work this as best that we can for you guys. And Eddie, if you send another email to the county about it, please copy me in on it. Um, and, and definitely, but it's, unfortunately, it's just not, not up to my standard as quickly as I, I wished. That we could move to resolve some of these issues.
What was that, ma'am? I'm the kitchen. Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
Oh, oh, what, where did he work?
So on the topic of the pool, you know, because that's important. I, I didn't know about, I didn't know there was a pool, first of all. But if the pool, regardless, the pool is probably full of some water. Is there fencing around that pool?
It looks like it's the metal fence.
They're just over ground.
Yeah.
So they can go over the weeds or trees and.
It looked, it looked like from the pictures, it's just kind of that, that wrought iron or, or wrought iron look fence. So it's probably about a four foot. Well. And it really only looks like four or five feet tall. It's not really tall, very tall.
So we'll continue communicating with the county and then we also could explore, and I think our nuisance resolution. Seems to state specifically regarding excessive vegetation. So perhaps we should also look at the pool as being part of that.
So we sent a violation to the pool, but we did not use the zoning regulation, not the law. Uh, because our zoning regulation specifically says that you have to secure the pool fence for the tall. Problem is there, uh, as we stated, there's a approximately six, six inch gap between two fences. Now the health department has regulations to directly regulate there. Our, our regulations are a little bit more, uh, unclear on that particular issue. So.
So have you sent an email to the county on the health department on that particular issue? Okay. We'll do another one. Make sure you copy me in on that. We'll push them because it doesn't sound like we have a whole lot of teeth.
Hey, chief, that would be the other chief. What about a safety issue? I mean, from a public safety perspective, if that thing, I mean, just go and kick the fence and see if it's rotted through or, you know, falling down in some section. Is there something that we can ticket them for, for not having that pool secured?
Happy to go take a look at it.
Okay. Climb over it. Yeah, we'll just have, we'll just have the, the chief go take a look at it. And then if he kicks the tires on it and thinks we can file a. File a, uh, a ticket on it, then we can hit it with some, hit the property with some tickets.
So one more thing.
I'll let Jim do the kicking. I can't kick anything.
That's true. That's true. That may have yours.
Eddie, um, you mentioned the health department because that brings up even more issues. So if there's water in the pool, mosquito problem, I'm sure. And mosquito borne illnesses are obviously very serious health hazards, potentially, as are, you know, rabid diseases that, you know, could infect. Uh, skunks, whatever animal you can think about. So when, when we involve or when we copy or when we contact the health division. The health department, you know, I would, I will prepare a letter from the medical profession's perspective. To, for you to include in that, so you can forward that to the health division. And I think that professional opinion might add a little bit more credence to whatever complaint we file or process we initiate with them.
All right. Anything else? All right. Thanks for your input tonight. Guys, appreciate it. We'll keep, we'll keep working on it. All right. So any other public comment? Of a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion for a second. I will second. Motion in a second.
What is up with you seconding?
Pete was predisposed. All right. Thanks, everybody. Yes.
Yes.